Mayor, we are recording. Thank you.
Paul, you want to mute? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, welcome back, everyone. Again, it's Tuesday, May 19th. It's 7:02 PM. This is the city of Cottonwood Heights. It's our business meeting and we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance and we'll ask Tim Tini, if you'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. You got the flag right in front of you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Well, we still need to find a way to do that. It's weird with the feedback and things. Anyway, thank you, everyone, and again, welcome. Tim, do we have any citizen comments that we need to read into the record?
Yes, I have one. It came in this morning and it was some questions regarding the item at the at the work session. Let me just read it. It's from Ellen Burrell. And by the way, I have responded to her on her questions and haven't heard back from her, but I will read this. She says, the following are questions I have for the Cottonwood Heights City Council at their 5:00 PM meeting tomorrow, May 19th. According to the agenda, it looks like Mike Johnson will be sharing about Wasatch Boulevard corridor agreement. Is this relating to further new developments of the council's reaction to UDOT's May 7 revised Little Cottonwood Canyon EIS? If so, would the council please give their reaction to the fact that UDOT is no longer standing behind John Thomas's verbal commitment to lower to 35 miles an hour, the two-mile Wasatch Boulevard stretch? I also noticed on the agenda is possible closed meeting to discuss litigation, property acquisition. Does the council know more about property acquisitions based on UDOT's insistence to go with four to six lanes on the Wasatch Boulevard expansion? Ellen Burrell. And I did respond to her on that via email. Happy to send that to all of you, but I addressed her questions. We have not heard anything from UDOT on them going back on on what they stated about reducing the speed on Wasatch Boulevard. I referred her to or explained to her that we are still supportive of the Wasatch Boulevard plan and still emphasize that in our meetings with them and answered her questions on that. And I have not heard back from her. That's all that I have.
Okay, just a quick side note. I think it's around June 9th, UDOT will be announcing its Mike, Josh, you may know this about the various mode alternatives for Wasatch.
Yeah, I think they'll release that. I think it's June 8th and that'll run through, the public feedback on that will run through July 10th. And that's the draft alternatives that will be available for feedback.
Yeah, so that's the first formal thing coming out of, I think, EIS in the near future. All right, thank you. If there's no other citizen comments, we'll move to public comments period and regarding the exception to a private roadway design and turn over to Mike Johnson to introduce that. We'll see if we have any public comment on that.
Sure, I will just quickly go through this presentation one more time for the benefit of anyone listening now that wasn't before. This is a request for an exception to the private street setback measurement standards found in Title 14, which is the city's ordinance that regulates public and private streets, among other things. The request is for two lots of a preliminary subdivision located at about 1560 East, 7200 South. This is just north of 7200 South, just south of Santa Fe Apartments up the hill there. Last year, a preliminary subdivision was approved for three lots on the subject parcel. The primary access to two of the lots is is through the private Platinum Heights planned unit development. As such, because that road is private, the access road to this proposed subdivision is also private and built to a similar standard as that private street with sidewalk on one side, but not on the other. The ordinance for for this subdivision and for any private road requires a minimum setback of 50 feet as measured from the center line of streets. But there is a provision in Title 14 that allows for exceptions to be made based on unique circumstances or topographic challenges or other circumstances present upon recommendation by the DRC and the planning commission and final approval by city council. There are some site constraints on this property, although these two lots are half an acre in size. A large portion of them is encumbered by either easements or steep hillside. That makes a good amount of these lots unbuildable. And then on the south side, you have the actual private street that encumbers another substantial portion of the lots. And then you have this parcel A, which is a drainage retention area in favor of, we believe in favor of Platinum Heights, although it's on this property. The request then is to reduce the setback measurement, that 50-foot measurement from from the center line of a private street. That 50-foot measurement works really well if the private street is built just like a public street. Because what you get there is by the time you take into account half of the road, the curve in the gutter, the park strip in the sidewalk, you're left with a 25-foot setback, which which perfectly matches the setback of the R18 zone. But where you have a private street that that matches the adjacent access road and is not built to that same standard, in this case, it does not have sidewalk or park strip on the north side, we're actually creating a greater setback than would otherwise be required in the R18 zone. The applicant's request therefore was to modify that 50-foot setback requirement down to 37 and a half feet, which leaves us essentially with a 23-foot setback from the edge of the private road. After review, the existing design of the road and the location of it, it makes it unlikely to ever be expanded, impossible for it to ever become public, and we don't anticipate or plan for a planter strip or sidewalk on that north side of that access road. Further, there are site constraints that that limit the placement of homes on the site on the lots. And an exception to the setback standards would not be detrimental to the public safety or welfare or really have any substantial impact at all on the adjacent properties. The one recommendation staff has made to the planning commission and the planning commission has made to the city council is rather than reduce this to 37 and a half feet, reduce it to 39 and a half feet, which leaves us with a 25-foot setback from the private street, which is the same exact setback as every other home in the R18 zone. So essentially, and functionally, you have the same setback on these lots as you would on any other lot around it. Based on these findings and the additional recommendation, staff recommends approval and the planning commission at its previous meeting unanimously recommended approval as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Mike. For our audience, it was discussed thoroughly in our work session and we'll allow comments by the council in a moment. Do we have any public comments that have come in?
I don't have any that have come in and I need to defer to Paula to see if any have come into her.
No, sir. Nothing has come in. I've been checking it every minute. Did you, did you get that?
Yes, we did. Thank you, Paula. Hearing no public comment, we'll close the public comment period right now and move to item 4.0, standing quarterly reports. And we have report by Battalion Chief Watkins. Just kidding. That's what says on the agenda. So Chief Pilgrim, we'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
I thought it just got demoted.
Well, no, that's what it says on my agenda here, so.
Kind of felt good, actually. All right. Let's see here. So I'll try to do the screen share again. Can you bear with me here for a second? Okay, so yeah, last meeting, I believe Wade Watkins, one of my counterparts, did the quarterly reports. So tonight, you had the pleasure from hearing from me. So I always look forward to this. It's a good opportunity to share what Unified Fire does for our communities. We value all of them. We're kind of unique as we do provide the service to, you know, multiple communities, municipalities. For the fire service set, that works really well as far as our service delivery and regional service and all that. But I really wanted to specify what we do for Cottonwood Heights and what's happened over the last three months. So we'll kind of jump into this. That picture of me was taken about 12 years ago, so.
Like you're 12 years old.
I didn't say that. I'm wearing my dad's suit. It's a, I need a, I need a new picture. So, all right. So what you'll see here, I try to keep this very simple. And if you have questions, please ask. What we do is we focus heavily on just the previous three months. And what you'll see here is I kind of drew a comparison between 2019 down here on the bottom and 2020 where we are, you know, right now. Looking at the call volume, we're not seeing anything that really stands out. We have been talking about that 540 call increase that's happened over that three-year average. There definitely is an increase in calls going on, especially in 110's area towards that western portion of 110, which is towards Midvale. We definitely see a lot higher call volume going on there. But what you're looking at here is you have 2020's numbers and 2019's, just for reference. So for this first quarter, we're looking at about a 40 call increase, which kind of surprised me at first when when the COVID thing happened. We were all wondering what that was going to do to our our numbers. And surprisingly enough, we actually saw it drop for about a two- to three-week period where a lot of people weren't utilizing EMS. Not that just wasn't here locally. That was, you know, in other municipalities and even around the state and around the country. So a lot of thinking, what they're thinking is just do the educational campaign on being very wise and cognizant of when you call 911 and when you go to the hospital. One other thing to kind of draw attention to is just your yearly quarterly incidents. So it's 17, 18, 19, you know, in the 400s. And then, you know, we're up in that 530 number for this, these first three months. So it definitely signifies, you know, an increase in things that are going on. And I dug through the calls, I dug through statistics, and there's not anything that really stands out as an anomaly. Otherwise, we would definitely be addressing those things. To kind of break it down to to kind of share perspective, on average, about 85% of our calls across the department and even in the fire service are related to medical. So and what you're seeing here are the top five types of calls that come from a fire dispatcher, medical dispatch. So we'll kind of talk about medical first. Our most common thing, believe it or not, is falls. We go on a lot of falls, whether it's elderly patients, a simple fall in a home. It could be something a little more, you know, more hazardous outside with the winter conditions. So we see a number like 64. It seems like a lot, but for that time of year and for the type of community where you have more more care centers, these kind of calls are very common. Same with the sick person, and you kind of get down to the unconscious or fainting. It started, that's cut off there. And then traffic accidents, 28 of those over the quarter, and then overdose. We get a lot of questions if those overdoses or anything are related to, you know, the current situation. And it's really hard to draw a parallel to that. The best way to do it would be to go back a couple of years and see what our our trending is. And again, we're not, we're not seeing a spike that tells us one or another. So I really believe a lot of these are just average calls that, you know, a community of your size demographic would experience. The fireside, you'll notice the calls are much smaller. So seven structure fires, outside of rubbish fires, which is anything outside that's not a wildland fire, so trash can or dumpster. Mobile property typically like a vehicle and then a other fire, which would be miscellaneous, which doesn't, we have quite the broad classification system. That just didn't fall into any one of those categories. We did have one significant structure fire right about the time I became a liaison in January. It did make the news. It's pretty significant. The homeowner's garage started on fire and luckily, unfortunately, on one hand, the closest station 110 was already on a call. 116 heard that house fire come in and they were immediately en route to that call and were able to get there, quickly set up an initial attack, and then 110 was able to get free. The rest of the assignment showed up and they're actually able to do pretty, pretty good work on that and stop it to the garage and minimal damage to the inside of the home. Most of the other structure fires aren't typically what you picture as a house on fire. It could be just a smaller component. So that doesn't mean we had seven house fires, but we did have one significant fire that came in and then we have one or two kitchen fires that are very common, especially in the apartment complexes.
Chief, just that structure fire you talked about, I went out there. It's just up the street for me and it's the scary type. Flames are going up and there were a lot of friends up there. You guys did a great job. The police did a great job by being there. It was, but it's, yeah, that's, that's the scary type. It's glad you guys were around to take care of it. It was amazing that it didn't spread to the neighbors. But yeah, thanks. I like I said, I did get up on the side a little bit later after things had got, because I just wanted to make sure some of the people lining up there were okay.
Awesome. Thanks for sharing that. And one thing I can't understate is just our relationship with the police department. They play a big role in a lot of these calls that we go on. And it's definitely a partnership that we rely heavily on. You know, they ensure our scenes are safe. And they do a lot for us. They probably do a lot more for us than we do for them. So it's definitely an amazing partnership. But those fires are, those can be intimidating and kind of an item to note, I have some pictures of our captains coming up. But one of the captains on that, just to finish an assignment, fire training. So he's probably one of the best in our department as far as fire tat goes and understand those scenarios. So it's great to have people like that in the organization. So that's kind of the calls that stand out, top five calls out of that, those, that, this quarter. Kind of frame of reference, this gives you the top other five types of calls we go on. We go on a lot of public service calls. So that would be a fall where they're not injured. They just need help or assistance getting up, getting, you know, animals or kids out of a car if the keys are locked in there. So anything like that where we're not really responding to something that's an emergency, but some somewhere where somebody just needs some help. We do on quite a few alarm malfunctions. We get a lot of false alarms that we respond to. And that's kind of what makes up the system detector malfunction, unintentional. Those are, those are pretty common across the board. But you'll see just, you know, the number seven, the common or combustible or flammable, those typically are smaller fires where maybe it was an oven fire that contained the oven, didn't leave anywhere. So those are, those are pretty common calls as well that don't create a lot of damage, but there are calls that we go on routinely. I know you, you prefer heat maps. I do have an example of a heat map I could show you here in a second. This right here is kind of a scatter plot where it shows just those different call types from where they occur. And kind of like I shared with you, you'll see kind of 110's area, station 110 splits, you know, roughly here. And you can see just on that western half of the city, they do respond on a fair amount of calls, especially in the business districts and where the apartment complexes are or any kind of care facility. It's not uncommon to see like Canyon Creek or Wentworth where you'll see a few more calls than average. So when I looked at the numbers, they didn't really stand out. I don't, I don't see anything that, you know, forecast that there's a problem or highlights anything unusual. But if we start seeing that stuff, we definitely will, will engage with those, those places and just make sure that they have all the resources they need. So real quick, I'll switch screens here. Hopefully this works. This right here is a good example of a heat map. And one thing that's a little right is due to quarterly calls, you know, we're only talking, we're not talking about a lot of calls. So your, your bright areas are going to be a little more pronounced. And so for example, right here, this is that Canyon Creek assisted living center where it shows up extremely bright. Now that initially kind of created some concern for me, but let's show you kind of an example. If I change that, it turns into dots, kind of a scattergram. And you can drill right into these areas and you can click on them. It'll show you the, the calls that occur in these buildings. And we can verify if there's a big problem or not by looking at that. So the heat map has a lot of value for looking at that and identifying those areas that might be experiencing higher call volume. But and they do signify similar things for fires they do for law enforcement, but for us, it does this highlight where we probably respond to more often than within other areas of the city. So it's definitely a little bit more interesting of a map versus the, the plot map with the dots. But I dug into each one of these and you have either apartment complexes, care facilities, grocery store with the Smiths. So some of these that stood out, that seemed kind of odd, only had a dozen or so calls. So, so when you take a 400 call number, so I believe what we had is 529 calls, 44 were canceled. So we ended up on 485 calls total that we responded to. You know, this could be 12 calls or 18 calls out of that 485. So it's definitely more pronounced. But when I dug into it, it really didn't signify any kind of problem like we were suspecting earlier. So so kind of a good thing to see there, I think, in my opinion.
Yeah, Ryan, I don't think the heat map came through.
Oh, did you guys not see that on there?
No.
Trying to see, I don't know if the screen sharing is working as awesome as I thought it would. Hold on one second.
That's all right. Your explanation was excellent because that's one of the, that's one of the questions I would have had if when you had 64 falls per se, if it's, if you can identify in one location and if it's tied to facility, therefore, there's a need to review the policy of that facility. But I think you've already answered the question. That's what you're monitoring anyway.
What I'll try, and what I'll try to do after this is I was going to try to get a snapshot of that, but it's a little harder to put into a PowerPoint. So I'll, I'll try to get a snapshot and I can share that with you after this. So are you guys back on the PowerPoint? Are we good?
Yeah, you're.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is a new measurement that I'm going to share with you. We're not yet rolling it out as a department because we want to refine a few things. But what we're working on is called standard to cover where we establish our, what we expect us to do, right? What we want to provide for our communities. And so basically, what this chart demonstrates is it goes from call processing for fire and EMS to turnout times, travel times to our actual total response. We have very little control over call processing. This number right here, the fire with the 258, that's extremely concerning to us. That, that means a call sat within dispatch for two minutes and 58 seconds before it was pushed out. Now, to preface this, remember, our percent of fire calls are probably about 5%. So it's only going to take one long processing time to skew all the numbers. So again, I'm not going to be too alarmed by seeing that 258, but it is concerning. And that's something we're going to work on with dispatch. That, that could have easily been multiple callers, which they tried to push out very quickly because that's usually legitimate. Or it could have been a rubbish fire that sat in a queue for, you know, more than a minute or two before they sent somebody out. So don't let those numbers throw you off too far, but there are things that we're watching pretty close. The ones we have control over are turnout times, which is when the tones go off in a station when we're driving out the door. And then our travel time, which we try to be in the six to seven minute range, which we're doing a really good job there. Our total response, I feel, is, is good. The one thing that we're working on improving is what we call our turnout time. And we want to be below two minutes for everything. So again, as you can see, one fire call, which with a long processing time and a long turnout time, can really jam us up a little bit. So our goal is a two-minute turnout time. And we will actually be pushing this out to our department probably by July 1 as a priority for us to be hitting that two-minute mark. So I want to show you this now. I want, I want you all to see where we are today. Because I'm extremely confident that that number is going to drop. And this is where we can make a tremendous difference in our communities is fixing this turnout time. So we're committed to that. That's something we're going to work with our crews on so they understand the importance of that. And kind of like was shared by, by the Councilmember Bracken is that turnout time is a game changer. It's a difference maker between showing up on a house fire and putting the fire out before it causes a problem or it be turning into something more significant. Same with the medical call. If you go on a call and somebody has a cardiac arrest, that turnout time being reduced improves our travel time and our total response, which improves the outcome of the situation. So this is something that as your chief, as your liaison, I'm going to look at and I can take extremely serious. And we're going to do our best to refine that and make that number better. And.
What, so what numbers, Ryan, I'm sorry, but what numbers then do you include in a total response? Is it all three of those?
Yes.
Well, because then they don't add up.
Well, so what we'll do is we'll take, we'll take the turnout time, the travel time. And typically, that's going to be it. So remember, these are averages, so it's not going to be a perfect number.
So call processing, turnout and travel should add up to total response?
Typically, yeah. So, so what you're going to see, we might have some fire calls in there where they responded a turnout time of like 12 seconds because they were already en route. So what's going to happen, this, the numbers are, these are all average numbers over those 429, or I guess 485 calls. So they're not going to add up specifically because they're just taking an average processing time and average turnout, average travel.
So but if I took, if I took average call processing, average turnout and average travel, I'd be at 13 minutes average. So am I adding that correctly?
Yeah, you may be. What, what I'm looking at is like, if you look at EMS after 107 or turnout at 235, so you'd be at 142 plus, or sorry, 342 plus 628, you'd be at about nine minutes for an EMS call.
Not counting processing?
That would be counting processing. So this, and these are some numbers I want to drill into to make sure
Yeah.
we're getting the most accurate. But my understanding of these and the way when we look at them is this is an average across the board. When, when you just look at processing, turnout, travel and our average total response time, because in some of these, you might have had like a longer processing time, but a very short turnout time, very short travel time, which would improve your total response. So.
But if they're all averages, they should still add up?
Yeah, to a more average number, right? So, and so the database we pull these from. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, there's something just a little where you'll have to drill in those and find that way. They should be a lot closer, even if they are averages. One would assume, or there needs to be a good explanation.
Yeah, I'll look into that and I'll talk to our data guy. The, the program we take these from populates all the numbers from us and there's a lot of metrics behind the scene. And so the way I'm understanding it, the way it's communicated to me is kind of what I'm sharing, but I, I can see what you're, you're getting at as well as far as average times.
Yeah, if I just took fire alone, you know, and took the three fire numbers, all averages, then total response should be those three totaled. Yeah. But I'm sure there's an easy explanation, but those are things that just jump out to me.
Another thing too, and the thing I can throw these off to, this is our 90th percentile. So 90% of our calls are going to fall below these numbers.
Yeah.
So, so there's some other metrics I'll pull out. And when we do the next report, I'll make sure I have some of this. I, I have confidence in these, but I can see what you're saying as far as the, the average is not, not quite lining up. Having worked in this battalion and watched the station respond and listening and hearing this on the radio, I do feel these are pretty, these are pretty accurate, just with my, my basic knowledge. So but I appreciate the questions. I definitely appreciate the concerns. We want to make sure we're giving you the best information possible. So.
Yeah, I, I don't think they're concerned. I think it's just that I think one thing that I, you know, the total response is probably a good quality number. It's just that when you add in the call processing, the turnout time and travel time, it's a much higher number. So there's just a little disconnect there.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any question that we're pleased and we've got great response time, both in police and fire.
And if we don't, we want to improve that, right? If we're missing the mark in any of these, that's the, the goal.
And we understand from Beck that we have some challenges there that we, we had the new director share with us in one of our last meetings.
Yeah. Awesome. But I'll, and if I can get to explanation, I'll share that with Tim and he can communicate that out. So there, there are some, some guides behind these numbers I can pull up and it'll help explain that. One thing I wanted, yeah, and one thing I want to do is kind of introduce your captains. We don't have, I don't have the crews yet, but I want to make sure you guys kind of at least have a face to a name. We don't have, I don't have the crews yet, but I want to make sure you guys kind of at least have a face to a name. I know it's going to be hard to remember all these. Once we hopefully get back into. In-person meetings, I always encourage our crews to show up to council meetings just to kind of get a feel for what's going on in their community.
That's great. We'd love to have them.
Yeah, and these guys are three of the best. So Captain Maine is on April 2 at Station 110. He's been on the department for well over 20 years. Great individual. Captain Khan, same thing. He's just shy or just past that 20-year mark. And Matt Anderson, whose dad was also a captain with our organization. Who responded on that house fire that night that we shared. These are three captains that do an amazing job. I have a lot of confidence in their ability. I felt they represent the community well. They're responsive. And I hope you get the chance to meet them all. We'll make sure we encourage them to, like I say, attend those meetings. And not be shy and be involved in the community. So that's important to us and that's something we value. Kind of broke down some of their metrics just so you get an idea of what each station's doing. 110 is definitely the busier of the two stations in Cotwood Heights. And again, you can kind of see just based off the previous statistics, just kind of specific to this station. So. They're doing a good job. They're busy. Quarter one, they're up to about 351 calls, which, you know, that's pretty good. That's several calls a day for that station. Typically, on the community side, we see a lot higher numbers with station tours and visits. Due to COVID, we quickly had to restrict station visits. Partly out of recommendations from the health department, but just because it was, you know, it was what was best for the organization and our community at that time. We don't want to expose anybody unnecessarily both ways. So we do have some stop and tours, you know, those are a little bit smaller account. Those could have been just like families coming by. The off-site visits are important to us as well, so we'd like to engage in our schools. So luckily, before things kind of got restricted, we were able to at least do a fire safety. Demonstration with one of our elementary schools and then a presentation. With a local organization. So again, we always want to take advantage of those opportunities to interface and mingle and. And do business on a non-emergency. Type basis with our citizens and our communities. Typically, you know, their only interaction with us is when things aren't going well for them. And so if we can get out there and do this, this is a great opportunity to kind of show what we also do besides that, which means a lot to us. Station 116, you do have two newer captains up there. So on A Platoon. We have Captain Birch, who's just about to leave our medical program here. You'll see. He's been one of our quality and assurance officers in our medical program. He reviews all of our narratives, all of our reports, handles any kind of. Concern or complaint that comes into the department. Great individual. I've actually, I've known him for about 20 years. We worked together in several different locations and he's a great person. Captain Garing, he's newer. He's been on the department for almost 30 years and. He's definitely one of our skilled captains who is probably getting closer to retirement. And then Captain Howgan, who's been in Cotwood Heights for a significant amount of time. So all three, again, great captains. I can't think high enough of them and they're great individuals. So. Again, Station 116, a little bit slower. They ran, they run almost a third of the calls that Station 110 does. I spent a significant amount of time working at Station 116. I love working up there. Great location, but definitely a little bit slower. So they average about, you know, 42 to 43 calls a month. 133 for this quarter. And you can even see a little decrease from 17. Which was probably when they're running more medical calls up the canyons to help support some of the ski resort activities. With the ambulance going up there. We made a lot of changes over the last two years and sure. That is not happening. We have a standby ambulance that covers all the canyons now. Which keeps this crew in service far more often. The canyons always created some interesting dynamics where. The ski resorts will get one medical call, then they'll get two medical calls, and the next thing you know, you got three or four calls all at the same time. And our captains are doing a really good job. We work up there on managing those and requiring less from. These stations, which has been a great change in how we're doing service there. So. Definitely an improvement that we've looked at over the last few years. That's, I think, has been significant. They're able to do two-station tours for a little over 50 people and then they were able to attend one of the open houses for. Bonneville Shoreline Trail. But other than that. Not a lot of community business during this quarter, which, you know, is highly related to COVID. So those are some of the basic statistics. On here, we have some of our contact information for those who interact with your community on a regular basis. Kristen Nee, she's our fire prevention specialist. She does most of your business inspections. Permit reviews, plan reviews and make sure that that stuff is moving forward. Ryan Love, work with him closely, covers all of our public relations, our events. Anything that's kind of non-911 related. And then Chet Ellis, who's here in the ELC right now helping manage the COVID response for the county. Is the counterpart to me who's going to, you know, anything that comes up within Cotwood Heights, we'll jump on. As far as emergency management goes. Then our event staff, they're kind of not busy this year, which has been a big change. So we're going to readjust some of their typical assignments to do and a little different community outreach, which I think will be. A little bit of a challenge, but definitely a good venture for us. So. So that's kind of what I have. I don't know if you have any questions or anything I can address or share.
Any questions from the council? It's a very thorough report. All right. Thank you, Chief, and appreciate that very much. And I really like the idea of. Of the two-station. The firefighters getting to know the city a little bit better with respect to selected officials, so inviting them to council or. Any opportunities to network with them, especially this year when we're not having some of our outside events. Appreciate that.
You bet.
All right. Our next report is from Matt Ship, Public Works. So Matt?
Okay, I'm trying to. See if I can pull this off. Is the screen up? Can y'all see that?
It's up.
Okay, so. Just going through, I suppose. Okay, so just to give you a brief update on what's going on these last few weeks, couple of months. In the Public Works Department. Really quickly, the Operations Maintenance Division continuing to do our road maintenance right now. We're kind of in that mode. The storm drain maintenance is going on. Lot of sandbags have been filled and prepped and ready to go. We've made a few deliveries to some places and. So everything's taken care of there. So we're ready for any water issues that may come, but. The weather's turning in such a way that it's turning out to be a pretty good spring for runoff. Ie, it's not, we don't predict any major flooding or issues going on there. As far as engineering goes, I wanted to give you a brief update on some of the projects that we're working on so that you're aware of what's happening. This is, the first one's been discussed quite a bit. It's the Wasatch Park and Ride is what it's called. We have worked with the Wasatch Front Regional Council. And tried to make some adjustments to that. There is a meeting next week. With the TAC, which is the Technical Advisory Committee, which will make recommendation to the. Next committee, the decision-making body. And we have made, like I said, some adjustments and we've reduced that to about $1.1 million. Which will give us some of the things that you of the council have discussed. I will keep you up to date on that or I'll keep Tim up to date on it and he will certainly let you know through his communications, but that is moving forward. Hopefully, the mayor will owe me a lunch here soon, so we'll see how that goes.
If you get us to 1.1, 1.2, I owe you lunch.
All right. Oh, are we changing the rules? Do I got to bump it up?
No, 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 no. We'll be flexible.
Okay.
I said 1.3, Matt, 1.3.
So like is this a go from like McDonald's to Lakai? I'm not sure how this is working. Anyway, moving on. The Bengal Roundabout, that continues to move forward. It's progressing. It is. We are working on right-of-way right now. The school district, I believe, actually is meeting tonight to discuss. The property requests that we have in for the amount of property we need. We'll find out later this week what their decision is. And what they'd like to do. Utility investigation is going on. Project is about 60% on design. We've met with quite a few of the property owners. And that is continuing to move forward. We anticipate construction. In the summer of next year, in conjunction with the school that we've been working with them. You will see tonight, and though we've already discussed it briefly, the Scottish Drive Stormwater, we did open the bids. And we hope to start construction on the Stormwater project on Scottish in June. Porcupine Trail.
That's the one where you've actually, one of those drains used to be like in a backyard or side yard or something like that. That's moved out.
That's that. This is the ones, we're taking everything and we were moving it all out into the road. To kind of take away some of the risk there that might be going on. Not sure why it was built that way. 20 some odd years ago, but it was. And so we're trying to correct that. We normally don't do that. Yeah.
Real quick, before you scroll up that, 2B, working with the school and the LDS church on property.
Yeah.
That sounds kind of alarming, like we haven't got that stuff already wrapped up.
No, no, it's, when I say that, we have all the agreements. I mean, we have all the. Descriptions and we've been working with them the whole time. They're just going back now to their boards and they're saying this is the final thing. This is what we need to sign over. That's what it is. It's, we. It's, this isn't new to anybody. This has been ongoing and we've been in constant contact and meetings with them. The church property is a little more difficult right now. Because the LDS church is really folk, I'm assuming doing a lot of focusing on the COVID issue. But we, like I said, we are working with them very closely. So not necessarily concerned. It's just part of the process.
Thanks.
Does that answer that? Does that help?
Yeah, perfect. That helps. Thanks.
Okay, we got to the Porcupine Trail. I'll just kind of scroll down. I hope. Did my pictures not come up?
Not yet.
Well, how far do I got to scroll?
Looked like you went too far, but.
I think. Oh, my goodness. Sorry. This is why they don't let me run computers.
Yeah, you're here.
I'm back there, but I don't know why. It's not allowing me to do that. I'll come back to that here in just a second. I got to try to dig them up. Mayor, can I have?
Your zoom at the bottom.
What's that?
Your zoom at the bottom of your screen in the middle went all the way down to 9%.
Yeah. Can I have 10 seconds here to pull up?
Yeah, take 10 seconds. I mean, I think we all know that. What's called the Porcupine Trail is this right on Fort Union. As you come up from Big Cotwood Canyon Trail. You access on the Fort Union Boulevard. It's a nice addition. I think that's also where we have the bicycle repair station, isn't it?
Yeah, it's over and it's right over there in that area. I'm sorry, I apologize. I had the pictures and everything. Tim even complimented me on them earlier today. So I know I.
Click the over arrow next to, it says one of 10. Click the.
Oh, does it go that way?
Try that.
Oh, there we go. Thanks, Mike. So if you can see along here, we still have rails to install right here where you see the barricades. That still needs to go up, but as far as the trail is concerned. It, this is kind of an idea of what it looks like. It's paved. It's an asphalt trail. This is. There we go. This is looking to the east towards the canyon. And this comes out of the parking lot, the park and ride. Going east towards the canyon right here and there's the trail. So. It's paved. It's there. This is looking towards the west on that. Coming off of Wasatch and out from underneath. And as you can see, we've already got people using it. So it's being used and it's turned out to be a pretty good project.
Are you going to keep those Jersey barriers there?
Yeah, for right now, the Jersey barriers will stay in place. Until such time as we do something with the road in the future. But this is a barrier to, right now to keep the, it was already existing, if you'll recall. But it'll stay up.
It's just an eyesore, geez.
No, I agree it is a nice one. I think if you go around Wasatch, don't you have them on Wasatch too?
Yeah, they're all up and down right now. This was what was here prior to this. We did not do a curb and gutter project. We were only allotted for the trail. So that's what we did it as.
But I agree with Christine. It would be nice to find an appropriate. Barrier. It's not really a barrier. It's something that delineates the trail from the road rather than a Jersey barrier. Yeah. We had a citizen who would, what's her name, Nancy? Used to express concern to our whole city where we have those. Yeah.
What is the length of that trail going to the east?
It was about, I want to say it was about 500 feet. So the park and ride, there's two park and rides. There's one up in the canyon right up here. And then the one over here where the bicycle. Is set up.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Nice connection, nice connection. It's just more of a connector. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just we're piecing the connections together as we're able to find the money is really what it boils down to. No funds out of the city pocket to do this and we did it as best we could with the amount of funds that were available. So, yeah, I agree with the Jersey walls, but right now they are a great safety barrier and at some point in time. When we do something with the intersection of the road, we can certainly address that.
Tyler, I thought you were talking at some point about. Putting some kind of decorative coating on some of the Rocky Mountain power boxes around the city. Was that? Is that something? Is there some community engagement we can do with those Jersey barriers? It just seems like, gosh, all these kids are going to have nothing to do this summer. If we can somehow just make it look nicer. I don't know.
Yeah, the wraps that you're talking about wouldn't work on concrete, but I agree, some beautification project would be fantastic.
Something we can look at going forward about, there has to be a way to replace those. I mean, we don't. We got bikes on every major road without barriers of that magnitude, so there has to be something. We just have to determine what it is.
Okay, we will certainly look in that and get back with you on some ideas.
Yeah.
But like I said, it's part of the project itself was doing it with the money allotted and working with the materials that were given.
Yeah. No, thank you. Not, we don't want to take anything away from the project. That's a great project, great addition. Yeah.
Okay. Moving forward, the East Jordan Canal Trail. We have that is. We have till mid-November to finalize that project. Both of our funding sources have extended us out to mid-November. We are working out or trying to work out a way to hold the public meeting as directed by the council. On, to let the public know what we're doing. We're assuming we'll go out to bid in August. On this and we will start construction in September based on the information we get. But we're kind of. We're working with Tim and we're trying to decide the best way to hold the public meeting to.
And please include Doug in those comments since, you know, that's his district and. There's a lot of interest in Greenfield Village area. Yeah.
Yeah, that has been a concern and some of them. We were within a day, I think, of having the meeting to discuss that as far as.
We were within, we were within three hours actually of having the meeting. So it was a, it was a quick shutdown on that. So. But no, we will do that. I've directed Adam to get the information also out on the website and through our social media so people can start commenting as well. So you should see that coming up. The maintenance.
I'm sorry, on that same subject, is there any chance of getting a six-month extension because of COVID and not being able to have a true public. Meeting with respect to.
The November is the extension. This was supposed to have been done the first of June. So November is the extension that we've been given. And we're working with two sources. I believe we would be, one source would. Probably work pretty well with us. The other one, I'm not sure at this point what they would do. Once we get through. other one, I'm not sure at this point what they would do. Um, once we get through, we're looking at, like I said, we're looking around July perhaps to hold the meeting. Um, and when we get to that point, we can certainly reassess and go from there.
Yeah, tip, typically the, the turnout you would have at this, I think the community room's probably big enough that you could probably set up some stations with appropriate distances and even limit the number of people that are inside at once. It seemed like you might be able to still pull something off if you were doing a station-by-station type open house.
Yeah, and I believe that, I believe that's possible, just like you said, based on the size and the notifications. It's really notifying the direct neighborhood and the adjacent property owners is what this, what we've been asked to do from the council. So I think size-wise, we can handle it, but we'll know more when we get closer in July.
Your public works, you ought to be able to figure out how to put tape on the floor to show, you know, how far apart to stand.
Yeah, it's getting the tape measures that we have a problem finding, but we'll figure it out. The maintenance projects for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, um, we do open the bids, uh, Thursday and as soon as we have those, we'll be bringing those back to you to move forward on those. Those are the surface projects, the slurry seals on the various, uh, neighborhoods in the city. Um, the Mountview Park Pavilion is completed. I'll bring up some pictures on that if you haven't been down there to see that yet. Uh, there's just some different points of view. This is looking at it, obviously out to the splash pad.
Yeah, you're underneath, underneath the pavilion inside.
Yeah, you're underneath the pavilion looking out to the splash pad. This is, you know, looking at it towards the west. This is what it looks like. It's a beautiful structure, um, offering a lot of space and a lot of, uh, area to go under there as groups and families and stay out of the sun and allow your children or whomever here in the splash pad and whatnot. So that, that is completed. You can see a couple of things here on the work, on the punch list item that we're finalizing, but overall, that's the, uh, that's the pavilion. Any questions on that?
What was the total cost on that?
One, one twenty-five. And once again, that was, uh, funding from the track. That was the track funding that we received.
And are we putting tables under there? Is that open space?
We, that is, the parks, I might defer to Scott a little bit on this one. Um, sorry, Councilmember Bracken. We had discussed that with the, uh, with the rec center since they're the ones who will manage it and we are kind of leaning in their direction on how they would like us to go. Right now, we have two tables that were, were there that we would put back in, but it, we haven't gotten that far on that.
It'll definitely need tables or you won't be able to use it.
Yeah, well, they were talking about doing like a, a smaller number of tables or something like that, um, and to, to see how it went before they just populated the whole thing.
Yeah.
But, uh, we, our CH two meetings last month got canceled, so we'll, something definitely to bring up as we, uh, as we go to our next one.
So I have a question. The, the tables that were there in the summer, where did they come from? There, there was a number of tables there.
Those are the tables that I think Matt was talking about, the tables that exist that will go back under there.
Yeah, we have those, we have those tables. We just moved them for the construction.
Perfect.
Okay. Um, the McDonald's sign is moved, has been moved and it will be getting reinstalled array. So that, uh, long process to move one sign, but it's being done. Uh, the twenty-seven-hundred east sidewalk across from the, uh, junior high, is it the junior high? Yes.
Yeah.
We're out for design bids right now on that. That, once again, that is, that's a funded project. So we are working on that and we'll go to construction on that, uh, soon.
Is that this summer?
Uh, this is gonna take a little bit. It probably won't be this summer. It'll start later in the fall, probably. So.
Okay, well, the.
It's a, it's a, it's a federal process, remember? So there's gonna be a lot of red tape. We're jumping through.
All right. Well, the Butler S E C was more excited about that than just about anything they'd seen in a long time.
Yeah, so that is, that is being taken care of. Uh, just FYI, I'm not sure if I reported this when it occurred, but I will report it now. Um, the intersection of Bengal and Island Drive, one of the projects that we put in for with the S T P, we were actually awarded for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six. If you'll recall, we had those discussions. So we were awarded about one point six million dollars for that. That doesn't come around if the funding is out about four or five years, but we awarded that money and we're pretty excited that we were able to get that. So.
Well, that, appreciate that heads up. I know Councilman Shelton, that was one of his, uh, major concerns is that intersection. So.
Yeah, so that is on the books. And if you'll recall, we talked, we're cleaning that up for bicyclists and pedestrian safety and, and.
Right, there's, with, with some good engineering, there's a lot of really good things that could be done there.
Yep. So that is our report on things that are going on or what's happening around your neighborhood. Uh, any questions or comments that I, or anything I can help you out with?
No, thank you, Matt. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, we just have a couple items of business and we'll get everybody home for dinner. Uh, the first item of action is Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty approving an exception to a private roadway design requirements that we've heard both, uh, in our work session as well as during public comment period. Any further questions regarding that action item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval. Somebody done mute themselves?
I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bruce. Any further discussion? And then I'd call for the vote. Councilmember Peterson.
You're on mute.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
He's on mute.
Councilmember Bracken.
Still on mute.
Still on mute.
My, my, my spacebar ceased working for me. I apologize. Um, I think I'm supposed to say, say yes now.
Great. All right, Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Uh, the next item of business is Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one, approving the construction con- contract with Newman Construction for Scotty's Drive. And that's also been, uh, discussed with us, uh, tonight. Uh, any final questions on that project? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion of approval.
I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bruce. Have a second.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any last comments, questions? Hearing none, I call for the vote. Uh, Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, the last item is we have a consent calendar item, which is approval of the council work session minutes of April twenty eighth, uh, twenty twenty. I entertain a motion approval of those minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes.
That moved by Councilmember Bruce. Do I have a second?
Second.
The second by Councilmember Michael. I want to do a roll call vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? So let's record that passing out of sleep. All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the, uh, works at the, uh, business meeting and, uh, go home.
Second.
I guess you can go wherever you want. You don't have to go home.
I'm home.
Yeah, I'm good. Well, it's been moved to second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Christine, it's eight oh two. We were close.
Thanks, Mayor.
Happy birthday to your daughter. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, thank you.
Oh, happy birthday.
Happy birthday to her. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
You guys.
See you later.
Thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.
At night, Mr. Schiff.